Okay ladies and gentlemen, it's time to start the meeting. It's called this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask all of us to stand. Mr. Robert Archibald will lead our invocation and Thomas Kenny will lead the pledge of allegiance following that.
Good morning, Mr. President. Here in the Father, we come to you today, Lord, so thankful for this beautiful weather that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity together here today. I always ask that you guide and direct this meeting and all things that come from this meeting. I ask that it benefit this community and all present. Give thanks and praise in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Aye. The pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to your Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in the great world of liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the votes.
Ms. Granby? Mr. Davis? Mr. Bailey?
Change it, I'm here.
Blanket Chip? Here. And Mr. White?
Here.
Mayor, I don't expect Mr. Davis and Ms. Granby to try any to hear.
Mr. Davis, I had sent me a lengthy text today. He's under the weather and was not able to get out. We do have a quorum, so the meeting is officially open. This time, we'll have approval, correction, the minutes from the fire meeting, please. I'll not motion to approve. Motion's been made for approval. Second?
Second.
You're seconded, you need a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. The minutes have been approved. I believe on item number five, the city manager told me these will be done at the next month of the meeting.
Yes, we couldn't get the queen here this evening, so we put it off too.
She had other things more for than the city commission, right?
Volleyball. Volleyball.
Oh, okay. That is important. Sports always rolls in.
Yes.
Okay. Item six is completion, review of unfinished business from fire meeting. Is there any? There is.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go into item six with number eight. Ordinance 2018-1023, public hearing slash final reading. An ordinance to amend Title 17 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to refuse and trash disposal by repealing chapters one and two in their entirety and replacing Title 17, chapters one with a new chapter pertaining to refuse.
Mayor and members of the commission, this is on second reading. This is a public hearing. There are a couple changes that we've made. In essence, what we've taken is our current practice in sanitation and put it in writing. All the rules and regulations are in the ordinance in writing. We have reduced the commercial blue cans from $40 to $5. We have taken your extra can, the extra service to pick it up is now $10 for residential and commercial. And we did add language, and I'd like to point out something that's sitting in front of all of you. It is just a notice with two changes in red line. And the first change on the front page was simply something we didn't catch, and we corrected that. But on the third page, we added language because we do have this happen every once in a while. We have a vacant house, and there was no one in the house. And so they can come to the city manager, and if they can prove to me that the house is vacant, and they don't have to participate in the program while the house is vacant, then we would not charge them for the trash pickup. Basically, the way it's worded is if they can provide the city with sufficient evidence to show that the property is not occupied and refuse is therefore not accumulating, which is the key part of that.
If you consider a timeframe that they would have to do this in?
Six months. Valid for six months, and it would have to be redone every six months.
I mean, how long they would, unless they've been vacant for two months, and then they come to you and want to go back and let it work, they should not be coming?
Well, they come to us, they should be coming to us for water. We should trigger us right away that they activated our sanitation.
I understand you need some kind of language.
There's language in here. If you're a utility customer, you will be part of the sanitation program. So I'm saying, if the empty house, no water, nothing, nothing would trigger us to charge for sanitation. But if the house becomes occupied and they come get water, that should trigger us to start charging for sanitation. Does that make sense? Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking on the other one, how people switch things around.
Right.
Where they were, you know, I haven't been there, you know, three, four months, and what's in there won't take back, the vacant won't take back. We might think about that in the future, but it's a big problem, that's true.
It's the ordinance is on them to come to prove to the city that it's vacant.
If you have, is it possible that a lamp or at least the water on?
They still have to prove to me that it's vacant.
Okay, then you can have the water on.
And that happens if somebody turns them pretty quick.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, Jim would say the water is on, and they would have to come in, and you can't go back there and say, oh, I forgot, come on.
No, no, they can't do that. And remember, they're paying the minimum water and sewer.
Yeah, okay. And then again, you've still got that six-month period in there that exists, six months, and we'll turn it back on.
Yeah, yeah. It's going back. So those are the only changes we've made since your first reading, and as I said, this is a public hearing, and if anybody has any comments?
This is a public hearing. It stated, anyone in the audience have anything to say for or against this ordinance? And the record shows no one stood for or against the ordinance. I'll make a motion if we approve, maybe. Motion is made, but why do you approve this ordinance?
I'll second it.
You're due to second it. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those like signs unanimous, that has passed. Item B, ordinance 2018-1024, public hearing slash final reading. An ordinance to amend Title 19 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to gas by repeating chapter three in its entirety and replacing Title 19, chapter three, with a new chapter pertaining to gas.
And Mayor and commissioners, it's on second reading here. We have added a customer maintenance charge of $5 a month, and then we've also changed the, or added the reconnect fee of $50 a month, which we intend to do with water as well in the future. Those are the only changes. This is a result of our gas study that we paid for, that we completed this month, or last month, and this is a public hearing as well for second reading. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to.
Here again, for against this ordinance. None being said, do you have any further discussion by the commissioners? I'll move it. I'll move it to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and duly seconded for approval of this ordinance. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, that ordinance has also passed, three, zero. Item C, ordinance 2018-1026, public hearing final reading. An ordinance to amend enforcement of Title 8, chapter one and two of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to intoxicating liquor and beer.
Mayor and commissioners, this is simply trying to put our ordinance in line with the state statutes. This does allow 10:00 AM beer sales in grocery stores, which the state allows currently. Our city ordinance requires it to be noon. It also changes the percentage of alcohol to 8 percent, and as I said, this just mirrors the state statute. And this is also a public hearing on second reading.
Okay. Being a public hearing again, does anyone in the audience have anything to say for or against this ordinance? Record shows no one spoke for or against the ordinance. Further discussion? Motion is made, seconded, duly seconded, favor of this ordinance? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those like sign, that ordinance passed, three, zero. Most report from the mayor, I was gonna when I left this house, it was very important.
Lancy.
Can't think where even where it was. See when I'm returned.
Was Lancy?
Just say something else.
Where it was or something, I wonder, ah, I'll think of it maybe before we leave. It wasn't all that.
Go back to, put that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah. I'll make monthly financial budget report, please.
Good evening. This month, we will be upgrading our payroll computer system. I know we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Yeah, a lot of that time is best spent waiting on the software provider to get everything, get all their ducks in a row, and of course, we want to make sure that the software has been thoroughly tested before we actually go live with it. We will be their first installation of this particular piece of that software, converting from the current software. So that will be set to begin on October the 19th. With that, will come one day in which we will have limited ability to be on our computerized accounting system. That means that it will affect the utilities as well. So if you get a lot of calls that they can't.
So October 19th?
October 19th.
October 19th.
It's the Friday of the birthday festival, so we block off this area when the one coming in.
That might be a good day.
Yeah, that's part of why we chose that day, was so we thought that it would be after the payments are due before the day, and it'd be, there'd be a lot of going around on the birthday festival. Not a lot of people are gonna be wanting to think about trying to pay their bills. So since we're gonna have limited access, we'll pretty much, they'll have to have the bill in hand before we're able to take payments, and then we'll have to manually post them later. So we won't be able to look up people's bills, we won't be able to look up a lot of things. It's gonna be a little bit aggravating, and they haven't told us exactly how long that'll be. We don't anticipate it to be the entire day, but it could possibly be the entire day. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna post that, we're gonna put a little blurb on our bills, post it on the website, and I think we'll send a text out to that effect, just try to get the word out that that one day, we're gonna be limited in what we're gonna be able to do. And then when we, so down the road in January, when we're set to actually convert over the utility portion of it, it'll be the same thing. But our plan there is to coincide that with the holiday, and so maybe the day that we're closed, treat that as our holiday. That is the current plan, and we're subject to change, but that's kind of where we're headed. The, for the month of August, it's, of course, the second month, it's still early in our fiscal year, we're right on target with the spending as far as percentage-wise of the budget. The cash balances are remaining steady. The gas is down a little bit because this is the course of the month that, so we don't have a whole lot of gas usage. It's too hot for anybody to even cook, so.
It's an excuse.
Yeah, it's an excuse. However, it does help with the water. So it's kind of a trade-off. Do you have any questions on this report? Because I think I sent out all the details earlier.
Any questions? No, sir, question number two, Dan. I'll move it. Motion's been made, you. You're due to second it for approval of the natural report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, that has passed, three, zero. Most report from the city manager.
Mayor and commissioners, I take the reports that we get from the department heads and put them together to create the State of the City, and it'll be available the first of October online, and a hard copy here at City Hall.
I would notice, particularly, I want to bring the attention of those who don't know. Teresa Davis has 39 years of service, Tony Chapman has 32 years of service. I mean, that is fantastic, folks, that people stay with the city that many times.
Yes, and we have to beg Tony every year to stay in here. And we've worked three years now.
Somebody tried to retire for the last year here.
Worked three years, yes.
I have a question for, and I wanted to let you know. Steve, your Megatronics class is using your information in a project right now, and they asked me, could you tell me how much you're paying, the city's paying for to dispose of the, our waste right now for ten?
Thirty-five feet.
For ten?
Yes.
And that's just your regular trash? It's not like our sludge out of wastewater or anything like that?
Okay. And they want to know, could they contact you if they needed any more? So if you get a phone call from Mount Pleasant High School, that's where to talk. I thought that was interesting, that one of the students had seen this, and it happened to be my niece, who saw this at the house and took it to school, and they're using it in their project, and information, and she passed it around. So some of these others may be getting phone calls from it, but they can't get the attention of several teachers. I thought that was kind of neat, that they took it and used it.
And last one, the mayor commented on the slow performance about how our water loss is going down slowly. Everything we're finding is meters, and it's on paper. It is not, every, yes, every, we have replaced two or three industrial meters, and once we put a new meter in, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that we're not registering on the old meters. So that's what we're finding, is old meters, and once we replace them, we get an accurate reading. So we're heading in the right direction.
How far is completion rate at the automatic rating of the city of the meeting of meters?
You mean, you notice that it's not automatic, like the power system, we have to still go out in the field.
I thought we had to put some of the summary meters to replace the meters in that work.
Those are the zone meters, those are reading the zones, those are to help for the water loss. But like your individual reader, I can drive by and read it without getting out of my vehicle, but like if the power system, they're looking at a screen inside. We don't have that. We're not, we're near ready for that.
We don't have that capability on the new meters, that we couldn't.
With money, yeah. If we had the money, we could do that, yeah. We're a step above where we were, but we're not where we need to be.
Okay. Any further questions from the city manager? I would move into number 10. Special reports from other city departments are committed, is applicable. We have any?
We do not have wastewater or gas reports at the time.
Okay. Into the old bids, move into new bids, number 11. Comments from citizens may not be included on these issues. Number eight is ordinance 2018-1027, a first reading by ordinance establishing a dog park within Howard Field Park and adopting a rule and regulation regarding the same.
Mayor and commissioners, as we talked about at the study session last week, this is to create some rules within the dog park on Howard Field, once this becomes operational so that we can enforce issues and play a problem. But I'm gonna turn the floor to Cory real quick. She's done a little bit of research on it. Every city does this, we want to make sure that you're aware of that, and if you want to move forward, I'm comfortable with it, but if not, I want you to hear what she has found some other cities do.
So first of all, Mount Pleasant already has a leash law, and it has the laws that says you have to backseat your dogs, and they can't be running at large and all that. So it's necessary to create an exception to that rule with the dog park ordinance. So that's what, that's the main thing that's happening here, is that you're creating a place where the public wants dogs to be without a leash. But it also puts in different rules for the dogs, like, you know, think of their, yeah, and think of the dog waste, and, you know, make sure they're on the leash when they get inside, no puppies, no glass, just different things like that. And Thomas provided a list of dog park rules that he liked, all of which are incorporated in this ordinance. I also went through and tried to find examples of ordinances for dog parks, and I didn't find any in Tennessee. I had to go outside of the state to find one, and they were just establishing an ordinance, and then they would make the rules, you know, they would just change the rules, you know, without being in an ordinance. So I think we've kind of gone over and above that by putting it all in an ordinance. There's also a survey, yeah, survey that MTA did back in 2014, that asked a bunch of cities in Tennessee that had, you know, dog parks, how they handled it, and all of them did it by our rules, and they had very similar rules to what we put in this ordinance. Like, and they just posted signs that said what the rules were, and they were, I've tried to mimic those as closely as possible, but I have that if anybody wanted to look at it. But I went through, and, you know, most of them, like I said, just had rules and regulations, anything that I felt like wasn't already included, I tried to incorporate it to give us as much protection as we could. But as a general rule, Tennessee cities do not have dog park ordinances, but I've drafted one for it.
I'm comfortable with moving forward with it. I just feel like most people think that once you walk into a dog park, they're free, but there's still gonna be.
No, they're not free. I've been in dog parks several places. They are, you don't, there's still a responsibility that people are gonna have to have. They bring a bad dog in there, they're gonna be liable for it. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the city, and we need to make sure that the city's protected on that because it, you know.
That's why I feel like we need the ordinance.
So the benefit of having an ordinance rather than just rules, it's more enforceable.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be, you know, you couldn't just say, because we have this ordinance, there's no possibility of liability, but it definitely would be more enforceable.
They don't have a collar on with a rabies tag, they should not be allowed to come in.
And that's included in this ordinance, but also in the.
In our citywide.
In the citywide ordinance.
But you can't just take your dog, I mean, it needs specifically say that the dog handler cannot dump that dog off and then leave it. It must accompany that dog and stay with the dog as long as it lasts.
It says that.
It says that.
Yes, I agree with you.
That's the most important thing that I've seen, because of my experience, mostly been in Florida with them, but it's, they get some pretty rough dogs in there. I've seen a couple of muscle fights.
We have, it has to be, the dog has to be under the visual or voice control of all time, at all times of the owner or handler.
Well, we, no, we, since we don't have any dog parks around here, it's gonna be a period of education of the handlers, not the dogs. It's gonna be handled by.
Thomas asked for this originally because he wanted to put up a sign with all these rules.
I would hope that we would have someone there in the first couple of weeks.
Chief Hazen, he comes here.
The entire, the entire time.
We were leading on some.
I agree. Because it's a new thing.
Do we have any kind of projected time to be randomly?
Do we have a date? I don't think we have a date yet.
No, I mean, that's all construction and we're finishing up the backside right now.
We have a lot of stuff that we've ordered, so, I mean, I, 30, 60 days is very realistic.
Well, I'd be glad to volunteer my time to do some of that, fortunately, on a little authority though.
We'll give you a badge?
I don't need a badge. I've got a badge.
Does that dog do that?
Yeah, he would, he would pay, but that we, it's really, it's gonna be something very, very different, and I pray the Lord here to not understand what it is.
It'll be a learning for.
It's not a babysitting service for animals.
Right.
Do some people really think that they just let their lawn go in their, like, park for kids?
Well, some people do that.
I know they do for their kids, so I don't know why. So, you know, to think of it, that was probably that question, but yeah.
This is a good thing, but it also, and you're absolutely 100% sure that we covered one, that we don't have any extra liability, we're all covered up.
You don't have any liability until you do have an incident.
What I'm talking about though, we, we.
No, just like creating a dog park, we did not have any additional liability or cost. We have, we didn't have more than one.
Nobody heard that. Sorry.
That's what they tell us. It's just like the playground, until you have a.
When somebody pulls off something, yeah.
It's all awesome, as long as you're creating the rules.
I'm not sure if it puts a spending charge on it, so. Okay. Any further discussion about this?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve this, is this second? Seconded? On further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion's passed, three, zero. Item B, Resolution 2018-39, a resolution, the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, approving the Tyler Technologies Software, the Service Agreement for Tyler Hosted Computer-Aided Dispatch and RMS Services on behalf of Mount Pleasant Police Department.
And Mayor and commissioners, if you'll remember, a few months ago, we went with Tyler Technologies for our court software. We're asking you now to move forward with this software that we've been extremely pleased with, and we talked with other cities that are extremely pleased with it as well. I believe Spring Hill is one of them, correct? And this would be our dispatch and in our vehicles. And the initial deposit will come, specific into the, in the resolution, but the initial deposit will come out of the direct fund, and the fees beyond that are in the budget. And this 80-page report, it's very similar to the 80-page report, with the software for the courts, and so it pretty much mirrors it.
Okay. Discussion? No, sir, I'll move to approve. Motion's been made and duly seconded for approval of this resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A resolution has passed, three, zero. Item C, Resolution 2018-40, initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and a far amount not to exceed $170,900 to finance the purchase of a pumper fire engine and related costs.
Mayor and commissioners, this resolution, along with the following resolution, letter D, our requirements of USDA rule development, just wanted to point out that this is within the paper, advertised in the paper, that these resolutions would be considered. This is similar to the large funding package that we got for the sewer, where following the passage of these resolutions, we'll put in the newspaper that the resolutions were passed, and there's 21 days for anybody to come and protest the fact that the city is funding this money. But the first resolution here is authorize the issuance of bonds, the one you're considering right now.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve this resolution, is this second?
Second.
You're due to second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A resolution has passed, three, zero. Item D, Resolution 2018-41, a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of $170,900 of dollars borrowed by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes prior to the issuance of bonds, and authorizing levy of taxes to pay the bonds and notes.
And Mayor and commissioners, I stated, this is simply the second resolution that allows the sale and the payment of the bonds required by rule development to move forward in this process to purchase the fire truck.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve this resolution, second? What term and rate do we wind up with?
Remember, I'll stop right here.
I didn't hear the question, what was?
Term and.
Term and rate?
I mean, we have it in writing on paper, I can't recall it off the top of my head.
Three, 3.8.
Who?
And the term is.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
When does it come out of service?
Per NPA standard, it's 20 years.
Okay, cool.
But isn't the body, isn't it, the part of it has a longer lifespan?
Same with steel bodies, so the chassis could be replaced, and it beats the stainless steel bodies.
I just don't want to explain something that's gonna lose our ISO out of.
Right, we were given the opportunity to finance it further, we don't, we don't want to do that.
Thank you. Right. You're second. Yes.
Yes, he did.
You're due to second it, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Like sign, so the motion's passed, three, zero. Item E, Resolution 2018-42, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to participate in the food safety partners matching grant.
Mayor and commissioners, this is, whenever there's a safety grant available, we apply for it, and we did get this, it's a 50/50 grant, and it is going to get boots and jackets for a couple of our departments. So we just need the resolution passed by the commission to allow us to move forward on this.
So move.
Second.
You're to move and second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We have, the next one is approval of bid for the new fire truck.
Yes, Mayor and commissioners, this is the third item on the agenda relative to this fire truck, but we opened bids yesterday, Monday, I shouldn't have bid, we had one bid, you have it in front of you. It's exactly what we anticipated and have budgeted, so we need approval from the commissioners to move forward on this bid.
I have one question, that fellow, why is that? We've had, I mean, the candidates, and they've always been more visits, just one, and Larnsburg gets them sometimes, but what happened to you?
Well, this is a specialized, it's not necessarily the regular type of truck, it's a.
It's a pumper, yeah.
It's rescue pumper, stainless steel bodies, a lot of them not offering that, and then we put in a 50-mile service radius, so that's eliminated a lot of them.
Okay.
We just felt that it was so important that they, that if somebody was then.
Absolutely.
They'd drive, you know, we wouldn't want it to be out of service for two or three Drive, you know, we wouldn't want it to be out of service for two or three days while they get here.
We're not like Columbia that has two or three.
That's what you're coming for. Yeah. That way, it, it would still incorporate anybody from Nashville, Franklin, that wanted to bid. It didn't exclude anybody there, but it did, it was somebody from Alaska that bid.
So if, if, you see fit, I would ask for questions, you approve the bid from M3 Fire Apparatus from North Tennessee.
I have one more question, Ms. Me. This Aaron's Fox, is that the old Aaron's Fox company that's been in this all these years?
Yeah. Like Columbia has that one that's like, use the brakes.
Uh, the truck comes with a warranty right for what, probably five years?
It's a hundred thousand mile, five years for that part.
What about the working van, is what I call it?
I'll pop my head on it. There is warranty, I read it too, that it's been packaged today for yesterday. There is warranty on that thing, but most of them three to five years.
Okay, good. And I'm only asking because I don't know. I understand the truck piece of it. I was curious about.
I do remember the longest part would be the power train, five years, a hundred thousand.
I'll bet that we did in our space.
That's true. I just, I'm, I'm asking for knowledge, not that I'm.
No, any more questions, we're happy to address them.
Actually, we do have the, this is just the, written by this person?
Oh, yes.
We actually have a.
The book.
The book. It came in a, the bid came in a box.
I'm sure. Okay, then, I'll see. Chair, maintain a motion, now please. So move. Motion for approval?
Seconded.
Seconded, due to seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye. Aye. That motion for approval is 3-0 for. Item G, Approval of Recreation Department to Purchase Grant to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation.
Mayor and Commissioner, I hate, Commissioner Granberry is not here because she is instrumental in finding this grant for us. This kind of follows the meeting that we had that was discussed on Virginia Park last month. But bottom line is, there is a grant for Blue Cross Blue Shield. It is due October 8th, so we will not meet again before that due date. It is not a matching grant, and there's no maximum to it. So we are using professionals from our, our planning agency, Listen Associates, as well as landscape architects to help us determine, when you look at the layout of Virginia Park, what we need to be asking for. So we're asking you to just give us a green light to apply for a grant that has no match.
So move. No match.
With that, I would like to, to take the time that came to Thomas and while we're doing this, it has to be in by.
October 8th.
October 8th. And Thomas and Donna and Victoria are busting their rear ends hitting all this information together. And I would like to thank them very much. It was an ideal grant, but it's very pretty, but it was requiring a whole lot of information. So I appreciate it very much you doing this because it's, it's a fantastic grant and it'll be wonderful too. If they call you with some information, please don't ask why they're waiting so long to do it. They just found out about it last Monday. And it's got to be in for the age. So we really hope that it'll be, well, a really good influence.
We have a motion and a second, Mayor, we stand and vote.
We do. No further discussion, all in favor, signature by the saying aye. Aye. 3-0, that's the, that's also passed. Item H, Zoning Ordinance Public Meeting.
Yes, Mayor, in the study session, we spent a little bit of time talking about how appreciative we are of staff, Robert, and the planning commission members that have spent all over a year and a lot of extra time updating the 1981 zoning ordinance that's in Nebraska. And now we're at a stage where we want as much feedback as possible. And it's going to be in our monthly report that comes out August 1st, October 1st, I'm sorry. So we do have specific meetings set up. There's a few extras of these on the table if anybody wants to pick them up. We have meetings set up on September 27th at noon at Community Center. We will be inviting contractors, developers. We want to get as many people as we can. The theory is that we won't have anyone come in to comment, but we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure that they do have an opportunity. That same night on the 27th here at 6:00 PM. And then on the 18th at 6:00 PM here as well. We will have it on the agenda for first reading in October as well. And then we have a November 13th date for a meeting if it's necessary. This will be posted on our website. It'll be marketed through social media on Facebook. There'll be a copy to look at here in City Hall. If you email us, we'll send you a link where you can look at it. It'll be on our website as well. And anybody else has any other ideas, things like this will be posted at the post office library, all, any other public building. But we're just trying to get as much feedback as we can because it's a living, breathing document that we're updating many, many, many years. And we want to make sure that we get everybody's input and everybody has an interest in the process. So I just want to make sure all of you are aware of that. That's all I had on that.
Should I, do everyone sign up?
No, sir, nobody.
Well, I guess I overlooked the sheet, so can I sign up now? I just have one question.
All right, please, ma'am.
I apologize for overlooking the sheet. My name is Diane James, Columbia, Tennessee. And I would love to know if the city is going to fund some glass doors for the slash, for the teen slash senior building? Because we're sitting back there with no light, no nothing. So I would like to know if the city is going to be able to finance us some glass doors.
I'll start off, I had a call, I went to visit my renter last week. And Mr. Brooks called me about that. And I talked to him and I told him if he was speaking, he came about it too. And we had looked at some doors and I think that the bid that they got was thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars, which I, never cease to blow my mind.
That's one door, that would not work thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Anything that costs that much money. But we had talked over there also about putting in a panel type door with, with lights, with glass that we can get put in both of those doors down the end and up on that end too for.
And it's eight-hundred sixty-one dollars for four different pieces of glass.
Which would let that light in. I know you do that.
Well, we really need some lighting plus today when we were doing our craft, the seniors couldn't see because the lights are so high up. So really, it'd be.
You have any problem with that door being a half door? I mean, you know.
Mr. Brooks did, and I'd be happy to talk to him about it initially, he did. He wanted a full door. But I'm happy to talk to him.
Well, we surely would appreciate it. We would love to have the full glass doors if the city sees it fit in their budget to give them to us. Thank you.
Is that all, if anyone signed up? If you want to hear anything else to say?
No, I think we've covered everything on my end.
So move. So move, due to seconded, all in favor, aye.